Good morning, welcome to the work session of Marshall County Alabama Commission, November the twelfth, two thousand twenty-five. Start out, we have a couple of people that got on the agenda for a talk. Ms. Blackman, I don't think is here at this moment in time. So how about Ms. Medley, are you here? Come on up. Come up to the podium, tell us your name and what, where you live. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Rhonda Medley. I live at fifteen twenty White Elephant Road in Grant. I really don't know how far back to start because we have arrived at a place on this. That is next to the lake and TVA has monuments, markers. We had the property surveyed, but there is a power line that runs on that right away currently. So Mr. Watson, Mr. Mays, Luke Buckler, who we were using to divide the two lots because it was put together, purchased at different times, but all one. So we want to build on lot two and sell the house on lot one. But when we survey, had it surveyed, the house in the TVA, old TVA right away shows the house is ten and a half feet into that right away. We reached the point where Mr. Watson and I think Mr. Mays were going to vacate that and bring us and the Rollins to the, the power line. But the Rollins, Genevieve's husband worked for Alabama Power and she told me how we knew that we had to have an easement or right of way for the utilities to access and she was fully good with that. But she said, I'm gonna have Robbie, her son, just kind of take care of it for her and.
Is his last name Rollins?
It is. So Luke Buckler contacted him because Luke was gonna be out of town for a week. And then he's contacted him again, asked me to do so, but Robbie has gone silent.
Haven't heard, heard. So you haven't heard no, just haven't heard anything?
Right.
Okay.
And I did talk to him, just explained to him what we were looking at. And then he said he was turning it over to his attorney to review. That's the last we've heard from him. I have a lot of history, even talked to Ms. Martin that built the house. And they had the utility company, North Alabama, came and measured for them before they built the house. And maps, but the one thing that, that I do have is correspondence from TVA and a map. And Barry Savage says that it doesn't appear that TVA has a line or a right of way adjacent to the land. And that's his map. So I guess what I'm asking is, how do we go forward with the right of way for the power line that's there currently?
So the right, the right of way that is there is part of the platted subdivision and it is not just a utility easement. It is a, it could actually be paved and it be a road, which that's just part of the platted subdivision. But there are two ways to vacate right of ways. One would be from adjoining landowners, which would require Ms. Rollins and you to petition this body to vacate that particular portion of right of way. The other way is for one of the commissioners and the way that works is whichever district this, the petition to vacate a right of way is in, would have to be the movement on that. And we've done it both ways. I provided Mr. Buckler all the petition and I think that's what he reached out to Robbie for. Do you know the lawyer that Robbie was consulting?
That's what Luke was trying to receive from him.
So the, the, the other problem is that when you vacate a right of way, so this is the twenty-five foot right of way. And when, when that is vacated by law, your land moves to the center of that right of way and Ms. Rollins' land moves to the center of that right of way. And that's the reason it requires all adjoining landowners to petition to vacate it. That doesn't, that doesn't prevent the commission from vacating it, but that is by far the preferable way to do that.
I've been praying for that.
Well, maybe, don't, don't lose hope. It, what is this structure right there? Is that something that is mobile or is that, so if you?
That's gone.
Okay.
That was previous homeowners.
So if you got to the center of the right of way, that would get the back, I mean, and I know this.
It's all we want.
So that would be sufficient for you guys. I think the better way to do this would be to talk with Commissioner Watson and let us have a roundtable. I would still prefer a petition to vacate adjoining landowners, but there is a methodology that, that can be employed if, if Commissioner Watson. And, you know, it's, while it is Commissioner Watson, we also have to be mindful of other districts where we've said yes or no to those type requests and we want to treat all citizens the same. So we would just need to, I, I would really like to talk to Robbie myself or whoever he is talking to. If Ms. Genevieve, if she's delegating this down to her son, I would like to have everybody on the same page, but conversation probably can get a lot done.
Okay.
Do you have a telephone number for him?
I do.
Do you know, do you, could you, I mean, I'm, I'm a terrible lawyer. I don't have my cards either.
I can put it, I can get it for you. It's in my phone. One other question.
I drove past a wreck this morning, throw them all out the window. That's a joke. I didn't actually throw them out the window.
When we went to Luke Buckler's office, Isaiah pulled him out. And this may not even matter, but Isaiah pulled him out and he was showing that their property, the Rollins' property, did not meet our property, that there was actually like a, I don't know what the legal word would be, a buffer.
That, that's the right of way.
Well.
Is that?
Even past the right of way.
Oh, really?
So.
Well, somebody owns it. I don't know who it would be.
I know.
There's my information and I will talk with Isaiah and get, and give me that.
Okay, okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for coming. Wendy Black, she's shown.
Is this your home?
All right, we'll move on. Report update from Martin and Toby, instruction. Mr. Kelly Howard.
Good morning. So a quick update on the jail project. Our main building slabs have been installed. The, we continue with the masonry, the parts A and B, with a small amount of part C has started. We continue with the mechanical, electrical and plumbing rough end at the walls. They're working directly with the masons. Kitchen above slab work. These are the pre-wall installation of rough end for mechanical, electrical and plumbing in the kitchen area. We're doing the M E and P rough end for the Sally Port under the slab. Sprinkle contractors on site installing steel sleeves and walls as the masons, as they're installing those walls. Masonry, we're, we're still around seventy percent complete with part A. We haven't done a whole lot in there. We're waiting on some steel beams to come in before we can move further in that area. Part B, we're, we're right around fifteen percent complete in that area with the masonry walls. And part C, we just got underway. So we're only about five percent completed there. Security contractors on site setting our door frames and working with the masons during wall installation around those door frames. We continue with the submittal review of materials and equipment. We don't have very much left to review. Most everything has been approved or, or at least reviewed and, and some requests have been to, from the architect and engineers to, for some more information on some of it. And we're getting that sent into them as, as it comes in from the contractors. Right now, the project's about twenty-four percent complete overall. This includes all installed work and stored materials and equipment that's already been purchased for the project. Now it's being stored at several different locations. Those locations are insured and we have pictures to back up everything that we've bought. So basically that's where we're at with the project.
Any questions, hi. Sheriff, you want this next, one of you want to discuss approval to change order request for additional security cameras in the new jail not to exceed fifty-five thousand to be paid from the contract's contingency fund? You want?
Yes, that's fine. Did everyone get, was everyone had, had time to look at that this morning? Okay, I didn't know. I made some copies if you did. You need a copy?
Get a copy?
Yes, it's the same thing within the agreement.
Oh.
Okay. I didn't know. I didn't get that till last minute. So I got it into y'all as quick as I could.
Something's changed, I saw.
Yeah, it's, nothing's changed from what I sent you this morning. It's basically, we met with the jail staff. It's been over a month ago and we started talking about some additional cameras that they made request. We finally got that finalized just last week with the jail staff. And so we went and sent all that to the contractor and the update, the update camera system is, the changer would be forty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-four dollars and thirty-five cents. This covers most everything. Now, if we run into an issue, if this gets approved and we run into an issue inside the building where a wall has already been installed or something like that and we can't find a secure way, then we may have to like take some part of the wall down and reinstall. So that would be an additional charge later on if that situation arises. We've just got this information to the people in the field. So they're working to see if, if these new camera locations are, are gonna fall, where they can go above security ceilings and penetrate walls or if we're gonna have to modify some walls. We should know more about that probably in the next week or so.
Are you anticipating a major issue there?
Not really. Not where the camera, from what I've seen, where the camera locations are gonna be. We have like one side of the wall, your ceiling height is seventeen foot. On the other side, it's not, you know, it's twelve foot. So there is, we're hoping we're gonna be able to stay above the secure ceilings on the opposite side of the wall, just drill through the wall and mount the camera at the height needed and not have to damage any walls other than just drilling holes through them. So, but you know, we're, one of the cameras is mounted outside, so that's not an issue at all. There's only two that, that we, we're gonna have to look at really close to see if there are any wall modification has to be done. Now, it would be minimal. It shouldn't be a lot of work, but I can't say how much that would cost.
I mean, the additional cameras, what are you talking about?
I think it's nine.
Are you not giving me a warm fuzzy finger?
Yeah.
I ain't been at work since Monday.
Yeah, you know, when, when you're this late in the game trying to make these kind of changes, yeah, there's, there's some issues that could arise during, during the installation of these if, if you approve them. I don't see a big, big challenge with it. Like I said, there's about two locations that we may have to do some wall modifications. And there may be a way to work around actually tearing a wall down and, and rebuilding. There could be other security measures that we could do to some conduit, surface mount conduit and then, and then try to cover it up or something like that. But, you know, we'll, we'll work through that when the time comes. But like I said, it's only a couple of the cameras that we see issues with. It, it may or may not be a problem. We, we don't have enough of the building installed.
Well, we've got to have the security cameras, so that's, we've got to have.
As far as the shared, that you'll have to ask the sheriff.
I don't have any blind spots, I'm excited.
And I, I know some of the cameras that have been added brings the jail up to the PREA, PREA standards, which is a federal standard about anti-rate, that kind of thing.
But I guess I'm gonna answer some question. To me, like, this shouldn't be called a architect's level.
Well, the architects pushed back on this a little bit because in other cases, some of the camera locations are gonna be in showers and bathrooms. And the architect had a privacy concern. And in other situations. Uh, and, and in other situations from what I understand, where they built other jails, they had to get approval through the county attorney to install certain cameras, but due to some privacy issues. Now, I understand that that's kind of a gray area, so I don't know a lot about, so. Uh. I don't, I don't know what to say about the actual need of these additional cameras.
What, Sheriff? What?
These cameras won't be actually in the shower.
Yes, they will. They'll be, they'll be in the shower, but it'll be located far enough away from the shower where a PREA shower curtain can be installed. Now, that is, that's a type of shower curtain where you have, it's clear from the waist up and the knees down. So, and then it's oblique, uh, for the genital areas.
All right, you know what you got to work with, you know what money you got there, so.
Yeah, and, you know, uh, normally this wouldn't be a situation to use contingency money, but of course we can. There's, there's nothing illegal about it. Uh, we, we like to hold the contingency money for other surprises that arise.
Totally agree.
But, uh, you know.
But this was a surprise to us.
Yeah, it, it was kind of a surprise to me too, so, but. But, uh, you know, if, if it brings the jail into federal regulations, then, uh, I think it's, it's a good idea.
Yeah, but I thought that's what we were, I thought that's what the architect drew these plans.
That's what I thought too.
Okay, okay, just long as we're thinking the same.
Yes, sir. I was thinking the same thing.
All right.
Any further questions? Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Let's open the public hearing on the proposed changes to the Marshall County subdivision regulations. Mr. Engineer.
The engineering department was asked to evaluate our subdivision regs. We have seen enormous growth this past year in Marshall County with, uh, minor subdivisions and subdivi, major subdivision plots that's been presented to us for review. So we're a county that's growing. We're a county that's growing. So we were asked to evaluate our subdivision regs. Kevin Stubblefield, Assistant County Engineer, Tad Orset, one of our other engineers, Crystal Jones, our Administrative Assistant, has worked hard on this, uh, to get, there we go, to get these updates presented. The commission has had input with this as well. So, uh, we wish to share those with you at this time. You have a screen on the front. Commission has a screen at the back.
We should have made that small.
Yeah. We don't have a note.
You have it right there in front of you.
Yes, you have a copy in here.
The first change is on page three, if you want to keep up with it. Now, so the, that's the slideshow, but the other document is the actual.
We looked this up. We got this a couple of weeks ago, so we'll get it.
So on page three, we did add language requiring appraisals prepared by real estate property appraisers that the developer would need to pay for and do. And basically in a nutshell, we want them to tell us that the development that they're doing is not gonna devalue the surrounding property. It's gonna be an increase or a help to the surrounding property. Uh, on page four, we just updated the permit fee. One was listed for amount on page four and another one in different areas. All of them matched the same at twenty-five dollars. We redefine ADT, which is the average daily traffic, as per ALDOT. That's located on page six. Then on page eleven. If you're dividing a land in the parcels, five acres or greater for the purpose of selling, just you're selling the land, you're not doing a development, okay? Then we're the opinion that can be done by meets and bounds. Why would you say that? Glad you asked that question. If Clint has some land that joined the property and he wanted to buy the five acres closest to him, if you put that in a platted subdivision, that's gonna be inconvenient for him. But if he is able to buy that land by meets and bounds and it be transferred over to his twenty acres, then he has twenty-five. So five acres, uh, done by meets and bounds, just need to survey if you're not developing the land. Now, E tells us on the single lot conveyance, is a, a division sale or conveyance or other transfer of land into two or more lots, flats or sites by owner of such land who has owned such land for a period of at least two years preceding such division sale, conveyance or the transfer of land who has not divided, so, deed it or otherwise transferred any part of the land within a tw, a previous twelve-month period, they're gonna be exempt from the requirements for the subdivision reg. The exemption is not applicable to any land property or, or lot of which any portion of the previous has included within the boundary of the reported subdivision. Now, on page twelve, we had some language that was left in that just needed taken out. So that was taken out. Page thirteen. We have specific information that needs to submitted in your application. I'm gonna let Ms. Jones cover that at this time. And for, the first items you mentioned, uh, we have not asked for this information in the past, but we wish to have this information to get to the commission. And we would love to know the type of structures being built or wrecked. It's single wide mobile home, double wide mobile homes, twenty-five hundred square foot homes, so we're asking that in the initial application to be turned in. Page fourteen, we changed the language to reflect correct fees due at time of application. We have a bond here that we've made discretionary and we'll explain that a little bit later, reason for it being discretionary. Here, we also changed the seven-day, uh, review by the engineering department to thirty. With the schedule that we have, with the growth that we're seeing, sometimes it's hard to get that turned around in the seven-day time periods. But it won't take thirty days to get that review done. We work very good with surveyors, so when they send it to us electronically, we're able to send it back to them electronically for them to make corrections in a timely manner. All right, on page fourteen, we changed some language to reflect the correct fee during the application as we previously stated. Now to page fifteen, we changed seven-day review for the minor flats as well as the major flats. The bulk would be thirty-day review periods. We changed ten acres to five acres, so if you're taking and splitting land into five acres and you're developing it, then we want a platform. We want you to go through the process, because you are building a subdivision, if you're building the structures on it for them for lease, rent or sale.
Like I say, we took Shell out of a couple of these places, put May. Shell, Shell makes, you have to do, May, they wanted to.
Do you remember, Crystal, if we took out a, a Shell?
We did, and I think it's.
Yes.
What am I to guess? It's in, in paragraph, uh, three dash four, the third paragraph down there. I know Shell means a lot more than May.
Yeah, we probably want to put Shell back in.
She'll do that correction as we, and then. Just guess. The last revision we done, uh, for some reason, we left off an important document, and that would be the certificate of recording by the judge of probate. Uh, we did not over, that was an oversight, but the flats that were presented did have the signature box for it. We're just doing proper protocol by putting this back in our subdivision reg, uh, for the probate judge to sign. They have been putting on, been put on the flats for her to sign and to approve. Uh, page twenty-two, we added the language, uh, talking about the character of the land, and this goes back to the appraisal that we're doing. Basically, we want, uh, developments that people be proud of in their community, that people be excited about in their community. Uh, so with this wording about the character of the land in here, this is what we hope the developments turn into, something that you'd be excited to have in your area. Page twenty-five, the county road design policy has now been changed to the LPA or the, uh, local public agency road design policy. This is just an ALDOT change in, uh, the policy that we use for improvements of the roads. On page twenty-three, uh, under section five dash three dash four, road names are numbers. Um, we've run into this quite often, most of the time in my career. The nine-one-one addresses were given after the subdivisions were completed, the plat was approved by the commission. Now, it takes longer to get a nine-one-one address as well as get on the list to get electricity. So it, being a discretion of the county engineer, we hope or wish to allow them one address to start with so that they can do whatever work they need to do out there, because they can't get the pole or anything set up without the nine-one-one address. So that's the reason for the change in five dash three dash four. And that would be left at the discretion of the engineering department, the county engineer, and basically we would give them permission to get one address through nine-one-one. Page twenty-seven, we added number five. Number five deals with the center turn lane, the deceleration lane and acceleration lanes, uh, as well as site distance issues. Uh, we have a massive development going on in District One in Union Grove. Is it a hundred and fourteen lots? So Union Grove Road is a heavily traveled road with anywhere from three thousand to four thousand vehicles a day. Uh, they're coming off an existing county road to get to that, but we wish to have the engineering department evaluate such high-volume areas. And if need be, a center turn lane, deceleration or acceleration lane is needed, then we would wish for the developer to do that at their cost. Page thirty, section four, five dash four dash four, we had different opinions on this, but we have it in this way at this time unless the commission points us in a different direction. Driveway turnout, so it says the developer ownership will be responsible for the installation of all side drain driveway pipes. The side drain pipes must meet the provided, uh, design size. All driveways with a slope evaluated by the county engineer determine what type of, uh, drain pipe is needed. In a nutshell, they go on, we're asking the developer to put in the driveway pipes. Reason for that is with the development going on in Marshall County, a hundred and fourteen driveway pipes is what District One's gotta put in in that develop.
That's roughly fourteen hundred dollars per pipe. What have we cost us? You do the math. My budget's gone.
Any other comments?
Well, that's just inside the development, like the main road, the main road going in, we can do it, but the ones on the inside of the development, they're responsible. Or is that all pipes for the whole thing?
That would be all pipes for all developments. Which wording?
Because I, because I got one, one road that this subdivision's on, it's got twenty-two homes on it. We're asking the, the, the developer to put those twenty-two driveway tiles in, not us.
And it costs you fourteen hundred dollars.
You do the, with the rock, the equipment and the manpower.
Don't put rock, put dirt.
Okay, yeah, thirteen hundred dollars.
No. Dirt loads, dirt's free.
We didn't have a, well, it's not free anytime you go dig it, haul it.
I know that, but.
We just started using dirt again the last three months, so we didn't have access to dirt pit. We're one of the few counties that still do, do that, install driveway tiles. I'm, I still like the idea of doing that for citizens.
It's the courtesy.
Yeah.
I mean, we don't have to do it, it's courtesy. If I got time, we'll put them in, and I tell them when they call, you know, we get time, we'll put it in, we got other work going on.
We put seventy-eight in as of last week, this calendar year.
Uh, ready to go? All right, section five dash six deals with lots, size of lots. Um. Minimum size of lots where sewer system, uh, is gonna be required is fifteen thousand square feet. Um. Understanding that a variance is in place where a developer could come back and ask us if for some reason they had, uh, five lots and four of them were fifteen thousand square feet, their last one might be fourteen thousand square feet or less than fifteen thousand, so they could ask for a variance that we would bring to the, talk to the commissioner about and then bring to the commission. That's if you have city water hookup. If you have a well, a minimum size would be forty thousand square feet.
That's, that's not gonna happen.
The health department, health takes care of it. We work with the health department on all of the, the, each, each lot would have its own sixes. On the fifteen thousand square feet.
And on their own water meter also.
And their own water meter.
Yeah.
Yes. Any other questions? Section eight dash one deals with the variances, and we have a specific appendix you go to, and you will find the variance there, and you'll be able to use that for whatever reason you wish the commission. Size of lot, percentage of the slope of the roadway, whatever your variance is you're asking for consideration would be presented to us in the engineering department. And then we would present that to the commission after our review. That's a certificate for the probate judge, application that Crystal talked about that you have to fill out. And the reason we need everything all together up front is in the past, we've had bits and pieces turned in, and it's hard to keep up with bits and pieces. It's part of the application. This talks about appraisal from the, uh, real, real estate property, the real property appraiser. Uh, tells they have to be licensed, uh, here in Alabama. There's the application for the variance we discussed. Uh, here. Talked about the maintenance bond earlier. In our existing subdivision rigs, there's a one year that the developer has to maintain the subdivision road. And then for it to be presented, the commission to be accepted and maintained by the county, become a county road. We're asking the commission to extend that to three years and have at least fifty percent of the lots developed in the subdivision before that can be presented to the commission. And the reason for that is we have a few subdivisions that are slow in growth, but if your road, if you hadn't put any roads or any truck, big trucks on it, then, uh, there's no wear and tear done to the road. So that's the reason for the going from one year to three years and at least fifty percent of the subdivision. Sixty-four through sixty-six deal with RV campground, standing homes, changes. Basically, in a nutshell, with them developing the road, they're responsible for it. It may be gravel road, it could be plant mix, it could be concrete, whatever they wish to do, but we would not be involved with that since it's gonna stay private. Tiny home parks, a couple of changes, homes constructed offsite on chassis, wheels removed after placement are reviewed under the subdivision regulations. And homes constructed on site according to typical building methods follow subdivision reg, regulations with reduced lot sizes. Special requirements for townhouses and duplexes, we changed the wording and had duplexes put in this, cause we have had some constructed over the past year or so. So that would fall under subdivisions as reg, as well.
Mike, let's go back to the tiny homes and RV parks. Uh, three acres or more, or you can't do any RV parks or mobile homes.
That's what's in the existing subdivision rigs, three acres or more, correct.
And we can't mix or match?
Nope. You either gonna be RV park or you tiny homes.
See, I've got issues over there, you're aware of, I've got some tiny homes, some RVs, some mobile homes, some people living in house tractors, I mean, uh, horse tractor, living quarters.
All right, appendix nine was special requirements for mobile home parks. Before, we had six per acre, now they will fall under the subdivision regs. So they'll be on fifteen thousand square foot lots. So if you're doing a mobile home park, then you're doing a mobile home park and you can't put them side by side, by side, by side. Got to be fifteen thousand square feet. Doesn't matter if you're keeping it under unified, you're gonna keep it, you're gonna lease, and you're gonna rent it. Because the way I read the subdivision law is that subdivisions define developments, division of land, uh, of a lot, tract, or parcel of land into two or more lots, flats, or sites. Otherwise, for the purpose of establishing or creating a subdivision through the sale, lease, or building developed. So, word lease, I look at that as rent. You got money coming in, whether it's a lease signed by a contract for a certain amount of time or whether it's a rent month by month. So with that being said, we feel like subdivisions should include single wide, double wide, thou, uh, twenty-five hundred square foot homes, what you, whatever your development is.
I, I got a twenty acre field, I'm, I've got thirty, I got twenty-five, thirty mobile homes in there as of we speak right now. So we pass this, their grandfather did, and they can continue doing what they were doing.
That's correct.
They don't fall under this.
That may be an attorney question, but I'm opinion, that would be correct.
Twenty acre field, we've got twenty homes, mobile homes, fifteen feet apart. It's signed as today, they're already grandfathered in.
Yeah, can't, can't retroactively apply anything, anything that is sitting there as it is right now would get, can stay that way, but if they make modifications inside there, then the modifications to some, I mean, they wouldn't be able to just continue to. They, they, they change it, then the changes would come under the new subdivision regulation, staying as it is would be great.
If approved today.
We look at the land. The new, new regulations.
Any, anything that, so to move additional dwellings on there would require the new, to be under the new subdivision. But the number of homes that are set up there as it sits today, they would be allowed to stay there.
Yeah, so I've got twenty acres, ten is full, I'm wanting to put the other ten, it would fall under.
The, the, the other ten would become under the new sub, anything that has not, uh, commenced work or has not been, uh, developed already from this point, if it will pass today, from today forward, would fall under the new subdivision right there.
Even though the pads are, are prepared, but there's no plumbing, no electrical, nothing else.
I would look at that on a case by case basis, I mean, I don't want to suggest that, you know, it depends on, you know, I would say that if the pads are there, if the utilities have been set and all, I mean, it depends on where they're at in the development process. Just the absence of the, of the structure itself would not mean that it has not, if they've gone substantially into the development process under the existing regulation that was approved, then they would get to finish that prior. And the easiest thing to do would be to look at whether or not they had sought approval to do what they're doing. If they received the approval to accomplish what they were set out to do, and it was under that old regulation, they're bringing it to finish their product, or project under the old regulation.
In other words, if they paid the application fee for phase two and they turned all that paperwork into us.
Yes, that's right.
And they do that without what we require, is, is there a penalty? Do we have a penalty in the regulations?
The, the statute itself, I think, has some, some, uh, penalty language in it, but the regulation just adopts the, uh, statutory language that is, that is, uh, in effect.
All right, Mike, let's go ahead and continue with what we got there.
Any other questions?
One, one of the things that, when I first got this job, that was one of, some of the first phone calls I got, you know, please do something about subdivision regulations based on what we've done. When I came in, I found out the commissioners and the engineer were already working on to get it done, to try to conserve the quality of life in our communities, this helps us do that. Uh, Marshall, uh, marshallal.gov, you can go, this is all posted there. Uh, and I'm not only talking to the folks in the room, but obviously, we're live at five out there, so, uh, I'm sure there's a lot of folks, and this was pretty dry, so we'll move on to something else. But I appreciate all the hard work, it's really been a lot of work put into this. Any questions before we do move? Discuss adopting the, uh, schedule for commission meetings.
Keep them where they are.
Everybody happy with what we're doing now?
Yes.
Now that we're able to go out on YouTube with the live meetings, I think with people, it's fine, doing what we're doing.
Same day, same time, right?
Same day, same time.
This, Mr. Chairman, can I back up?
Yes, sir.
On the, uh, public hearing on the proposed changes, the presentation was made, but I believe that it would be appropriate to, to open it up and ask, since this is a public hearing, and it was publicized, if there are any comments from those that are in attendance.
Sure. Any additional comments?
Does anyone have anything that they would like to speak to on the subdivision regulations as what they were presented?
No, ma'am, this, the subdivision regulations would apply in any area that's, that's Marshall County.
Any, any development that's going on in Marshall County, other than the cities? It's not, no, ma'am, that'll come a little bit later.
Thank you, I'm sorry to.
No, that's fine, thank you. With that, we will close the public hearing. Discuss selection of the vice chairman, and let me say something about that right quick. Uh, Mr. Baker, uh, had to come into service twice in this year, uh, through some unfortunate events, and kind of take over and run his job plus the chairman's job. Uh, then when I came in, uh, he's certainly been a resource that I have had. And I, I appreciate what, uh, Commissioner Baker's had to do this year. Uh, and if you, if you get to sit in this seat, you find out how much he had to, so, appreciate that. Joy, are you?
I'm satisfied, I'm, I'm just thankful I was able to help and, uh, but working with the other guys, it's, 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 it's been, uh, it was a challenge, and it was a tough time that I had to do that, but I'm, I'm, I'm okay with it.
Well, I also appreciate all the other commissioners that chined, and it helped during this process, cause it's, it's been some difficult times. So I am going to recommend Joey to continue with that job, uh, somebody else has got a recommendation, let's do that as well. Not, we'll move on. Discuss approval to cancel November the twenty-sixth and December the twenty-fourth meeting due to the holidays. They both fall on ho, on holiday weeks. Announce white good pickup and dumpsters for November the seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five for all districts. District one and two free, district three and four pay. Any comments, guys?
Again, we got a lot of public here, it says pickup, white good pickups. All the districts pick up stoves, refrigerators, freezers, anytime. You call their office and tell them you have some addresses that's out on the road, we'll come get it Monday through Thursday, not just on these days. We will come and get it that day, a lot of people think you gotta wait every three months to get something picked up, that's not true. And we don't go in the house, unplug it, haul it out, you gotta get it outside, of course.
Thank you.
Most time you put on side road, it'll be gone anyway. The, the scrapper's get it before we get there. If that happens, call us back.
Collectors here in Marshall County, and we're just leaving it at that.
Thirteen dollars a hundred right now for me.
We also want to, once again, announce the garbage exemption requirements for two thousand twenty-five through November the first through December the thirty-first. If you are on social security income only, you go to the health department, fill out an application, and apply there for free garbage pickup.
Takes five minutes, takes longer to lock your car and walk in the door, just to let that paper work.
Brad, you wanna come up? Discuss approval, uh, proposal to reroute the entrance ways to Gunnar's courthouse, twenty-two thousand nine hundred seventy-two dollars and forty cents. Uh, this is, would be coming out of the courthouse and jail budget. What I want you to do, Brad, is explain what this does for us and what we can repair with doing this, but what it don't do as well.
Is that for both of them or just?
That's for all four, there's two in the front, two in the back.
Put Gunnar's below.
Gunnar's courthouse on, yes. Um, what it is, it, it's a TPO roof that's up there, now it's got a membrane on it. And those membranes have been there for roughly thirty-five years, so they're deteriorated. Uh, the front porch up there, as many of y'all know, been leaking for years through the light up there. Uh, this will eliminate that, and we will, once we get the leak stopped, we're gonna fix all the roof or the ceiling up there as well, and get it back looking nice. Um, there is also a, uh, per square foot cost on substrate materials, things like that, it, it's not very much. So, if they get in there, they tear off the roof, they find issues below that roof, which they probably will, because it's been leaking for ten years. Um, then they'll get that fixed and repaired, and everything will be good at that point.
All right, what, what I want commissioners to understand, this is those ends roofs that we were talking about, this is not the center of the courthouse. This does not address the leaks that we have in two or three places in the main building that we still got to get fixed.
Right, I've actually got a roofer coming at eleven o'clock today to give us, uh, an estimate on that also, I've already got one estimate, um, from another local roof, roofing company.
All right, there, there's issues that we need to repair in the courthouse, the courtroom, and some bathrooms, but we can't do that till we get all these leaks stopped, so we're working on it, appreciate the work.
Speaking of leaks, does this one just still leak?
Yes.
All these windows.
All, all of these top windows in this courthouse leak.
Every one of them, all four sides.
And the, the issue with the, with the leak on second floor, outside the courtroom, inside the courtroom, um, when it rains, the leak doesn't stop, start for about thirty or so hours later. And the reason for that is there's three roofs on this building. So what they done is when they remodel, they put a new roof on, when they remodel, they put a new roof on. So it leaks through that roof, then it finds its way to another leak, then it finds its way to another leak, which comes into the building. So, we've, we've been up there many, 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 many times trying to find this thing, we can't find it. Anyway, I've had professionals come in, we can't find it.
But at some point, we will find it, we've got to get it fixed, it just tier rates daily when you don't. Any questions?
New windows back there behind the courtroom, did that stop the leaks there?
No.
They'll look same.
And we've looked at, just generally looked at replacing all of that, we'll just frame and do something, man, we could probably build a courthouse. Thank you. Any questions? Okay, county agent, your time. Uh, discuss approval, proclamation, naming, uh, naming November twenty-third through November twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-five is Alabama Farm City Week. And you're up to present your annual report, just do both of those.
Crystal?
I will, but I don't have a copy of it, would you, uh, give me a copy? I would be happy to read it. It still, feels like my annual, I get to do this each, each year.
Yeah, yeah.
Marshall County Farm to City Proclamation. For seventy years, the American people have joined together during Thanksgiving week to observe Farm City Week, a time set aside to express gratitude for the bounty with which God has blessed our land. Throughout the week, Americans recognize the hard work and achievements of farmers, rural townspeople, and city residents who make our nation's agricultural production and distribution system so successful. This cooperation between rural and city dwellers for mutual benefit truly helps ensure our country's well-being. Here at home, Alabama farmers have provided for the state over the years by producing the food and fiber everyone relies on. This year's fitting, Farm City theme of Grow Alabama focuses on the impact of agriculture on local communities and the state. Farmers, foresters, and ag professionals generate over seventy-seven point three billion dollars per year for Alabama's economy, while accounting for over two hundred and seventy thousand jobs, ten percent of the state's workforce. American agriculture and many certain industries that depend upon it is a story of extraordinary labor creating extraordinary abundance. The American farmer has an impact on every aspect of life, from big cities to small towns, and all the routes in between. At this time of year, it's only fitting that all Americans offer a special sign of thanks to those who grow, harvest, and bring the fruits of the sun, seed, and soil to our nation's tape. Now therefore, we, the mayors and county commish, commission chair of Marshall County of Alabama, by virtue of the authority vested in us, do hereby proclaim the week of November twenty-first through November twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five, as Alabama Farm City Week. We call upon all citizens of our communities and rural areas and cities alike to join in recognizing the accomplishments of our productive farmers and our urban residents who cooperate to create abundance, wealth, and strength for our nation. And witness whereof, we here unto have set our hands and seals, this the twenty, mm, the, the twelfth day of November two thousand twenty-five.
So this is initiative we do every year, and you have to sign that. Um, but this is, um, just a kind of a celebration, we celebrate every week leading up to Thanksgiving, um, we have our Marshall County Farmers Federation president here, John Bevel. Um, this is a initiative between, uh, the Alabama Farmers Federation, um, Alabama Cooperative Extension System, and lots of other entities. Uh, just to really bring awareness to how farmers and folks in the city work together and how we all need each other, um, to function and, uh, eat every day and clothe ourselves. So, um, that's, it's just, we try to get the conversation started, and this is a way to, to try to do that. So, that's that portion, and then the next portion is our annual report from the extension office. I think lots of people don't know exactly what we do down there. You know that, oh, there's an Auburn office downstairs. But we do a little bit of lots of things. So we, commissioners, you guys have a annual report there. It's, I'm not talking about roads, I'm not talking about taxes. Maybe you don't think it's fun, but I do. But we appreciate your support. A very small sliver of our funding comes from the county commission, and you house us. So thank you for that. I'm just going to point out a few things that we've done this year, accomplished this year. And really, most of that, you did see we had some four-Hers. We still have some four-Hers hanging with us here, but some had the meeting at ten o'clock that they had to be to, and you guys were running a little long. So they apologized for walking out, but I did want them to see local government too, and how it works and what goes into it. So there are, we, lots and lots of things on the front that you can go through that we have provided to our communities throughout the year. We work countywide. A lot of people think, well, if you're the Auburn office, Auburn gives you all your money. No, they don't. They don't. We are called the Alabama Cooperative Extension System. So we work with Alabama A&amp;M, Auburn, Tuskegee, local governments, federal government, and state government. That's why it's called cooperative. So we get lots of fun, not lots of funding, little bit of funding from lots of different places. That's why we're called a cooperative, okay? So on the back, I'm just gonna point out a few things that may be of interest. We provided over three hundred educational programs throughout the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. We go, we kind of run by school year instead of fiscal year or calendar year. Lots and lots and lots of partnerships, you can see there at the top. We served over two thousand four-H members in the state, and we had over a hundred kids participate in four-H animal projects. So that is pigs, chickens, horses, and what am I missing? Missing one. Cows, thank you. Yes, beef, beef project. That was my project. How could I forget that? Forty-seven members attended regional and state competitions. That's the most in the state. So I would, Audrey, Ms. Audrey was here earlier. She's our four-H agent. I would put our four-H program up against anybody in the state. We always have the largest delegation at everything in the state. And if we did not have funding from you guys, we could not do that. So thank you sincerely for that. We donated, our master gardeners grew and donated eighty-four hundred pounds of produce to homebound seniors, and that is also an extension program. And we had over almost twelve hundred kids compete in competitive events where they're learning life skills, things that we hope they will take into the world to contribute to become successful citizens so they don't have to go seek him at the jail. He's not even listening. But anyways, lots and lots of things done this year. We appreciate your support. If you have any questions, please, at any time, feel free to reach out to me. I am not always downstairs in the office because we are outreach. So if we're here all the time, we're not doing our jobs, so.
Kristen, thank you.
Thank you.
Over the years, I served on United Way Allocation Committee and had a chance to audit them a couple of times. And let me tell you, the work they do in four-H is staggering, the number of kids they have involved. I think you're in every school now in the county, and the roundup or the big deal at the end of the year when you have is just great. So they do a good job. Thanks, John Bevel, for coming. Appreciate you having me here.
Kristen is a friend of mine, and a friend of ours. She's won some awards this year. That's very well deserved. We've got a top-notch program. Those kids, they learn a lot. I think, I may be biased, but I think we've got the top program in the state right now. They are all involved. I've been active with them in a few of the things they've done. I like the watermelon tasting deal. I enjoyed that. Bless you, Clint. And it's very big to keep their farmers, because we all started. How many of us can say our families just started as farmers in this community? And it's going to continue. My kids did well in it. I've got a son that now works for the Department of Agriculture. He's the lead vet for South Alabama down there now, and he's very active in this. It's a great program, and I really appreciate what y'all do.
Thank y'all. Discuss approval to appoint Commissioner Ronnie Schumay and Assistant District Attorney Jordan Elliott to the Coosa Valley Youth Service Board of Directors. Let me read you a real quick text I got from Chuck Knight, who is our juvenile supervisor. Today we have nine kids in detention, four at Camp Lewis, one in Coosa Valley Attention Home. No extra charge for the two extra detention beds, a home or Camp Lewis beds because of what we did when we went with this program. And he said, thank you, thank you again. This comes from he and the judge on what this commission did to get us involved in this program. Ronnie will say anything as far as...
I've worked with this program before in my law enforcement career over the years with the Huntsville Detention Center and several other agencies, and you know, these kids, they need some help, they really do, and we can try to keep them out of trouble. We've got some repeat offenders on everything. We've got good and bad people everywhere. This is a chance to get these kids to show them what they're doing, what they did wrong, and try to correct that. And I'd be honored to get this position.
All right. Thank you. Any other nominees or questions? Moving on, sheriff, discuss approval of inmate telecommunications contract addendum for jail.
Okay. So what this is, is we're updating our equipment for inmate telecommunications. We have now a called chirping device. It's also like a handheld device that looks like an iPod, basic function, that has calling ability also. We're gonna upgrade the tablets in our facility. The main reason we want to upgrade is the chirps are kind of going away, that device itself. They're not making any more of them. And two is for the educational component that we're trying to put into our jail. The tablet will allow the inmates to have that educational app and software to do things inside, you know, in the cell where now they're doing other things, but this time they'll be able to do educational apps, educational programs on these tablets. So what this is, is actually an addendum to the contract that exists. So it's actually going to extend it three years and add the tablets. It's also increasing the amount of money that the calls, I think, went from twenty-one cents to twenty-two cents. Somewhere right in there. It also increased the amount of the technological, technology grant that's available through this contract, about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. That's what we're asking to do.
It's also gonna increase the inmates you have to have in jail too.
The inmate said like it was an original contract, three fifty.
The inmates are gonna be sitting three fifty.
I'm sorry, I can't hardly hear you.
The other contract was two hundred and ninety something.
Yeah, I think it was, yeah, but this is three fifty because, that's because our daily rate now is around three forty, three fifty. Yeah. And the rate's always been the same, well, the inmate's always been the same. Just back from the original contractor side, it was around two fifty back then. That's basically what it is.
But I guess what I want to ask, how did this get signed without coming through the commission?
It did, it came to the commission.
The initial contract.
The initial contract was signed by the commission. It was signed by James Hudson, that myself.
It was signed by James Hudson.
That's right.
It didn't come through the commission.
It did.
It did not. There's no, there's no record on any minutes where this was come through, this come through the minutes.
I came before this commission, Rick.
And you wanted to bid it out.
And we bid it out.
And we did.
And we bid it out, and we opened the bids, and we awarded the bid. I came back to this commission and said, this is who I want. Commission voted for it, including you, and then James signed.
No, 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 no. This never come through the commission.
It did, Rick. I promise you it did.
Well, there's no, there's no, did you ever find anything on the minutes where this come through the commission?
We didn't find anything on the minutes. We did find when it was on the workstation.
Okay, so we did not find anything where it went through the commission.
Well, it may not be in the minutes for whatever reason, but I stood right here and asked for that contract to be approved.
Okay, all right.
It did get bid out there.
It did, it did get bid out, and we awarded it.
And I don't think Jeremy Hudson was signing it unless I'd bought it before the commission.
Okay.
Any other questions? Sheriff, discuss approval of Cardex M-Star Maintenance Contract.
So we, the warranty's pretty much up on our Cardex. They sent us two options about doing a service contract with that piece of equipment. And what we learned, that Cardex is kind of a unique niche type business, like elevators. So not many people do it. So Cardex is often a service agreement. The first option is they call it Flex Care, and the second one's Full Care Contract. Now, the difference between the two is the Full Care Contract is gonna include all onsite repairs, labor parts, and travel, whereas the Flex Care only gives you a discounted rate, like a labor rate, so it includes a certain amount of parts and those type things. My recommendation is we do the full service contract. I know Kelly, you've had some experience with these Cardex machines too. Do you think that's worth it on the full contract? Yeah, you're looking at two hundred, two hundred dollars plus in labor costs just for them to come onsite. The car, yeah, the filing system that we keep in the sheriff's office. The amount of files we have with our warrants is tremendous. That's why we got that Cardex system. So I'd recommend we do the full service contract on it.
Okay, any other questions? Number fifteen, discuss approval to go out for bid for one or more Chevrolet Police Package Tahoes, two thousand twenty-six models, equipped with emergency equipment packages. Sheriff?
We're just asking to go out and bids on one or more. We got, every year we purchase so many vehicles, I think we've been doing five. We're gonna look at least doing five, maybe more. I don't know. It's gonna be up to what the budget says, what Ashley comes up with and Johnny comes up with. But we're just asking to go out and bids and go get that process done.
Is it cheaper to go on bid or go off state because I think, ain't Chevrolet got the state bid again?
Well, you got, you have a state bid on Tahoes, but we went out bid last time, we got better price. And they're right here locally, and we deal here local type business. This bid will be for vehicles and equipment to fully outfit them, you know, with emergency style equipment and all that.
The last several pickups that we bought for the commission, for the districts, have been, we bought first them locally, cheaper than we did on the state bid.
Yeah, it never hurts to try to bid it out to see if you get a better price.
Any other questions? Discuss approval to accept traffic enforcement grant from North Central Alabama Highway Safety Office, Nomad.
This is just a basic grant we do every year for overtime for traffic enforcement across the county. That's pretty much it. It's a routine type thing. So we're just looking to continue that effort that we've been doing.
Discuss approval to place animal control enforcement officer on the state's office and work with the personnel board to set the job descriptions, and that would also include a tech. And then I'll go ahead and read eighteen, discuss approval to create, at the same time, an animal shelter manager. We're separating the two, where over the years they've been together, position and work with the personnel board to set job descriptions and additional texts. And to give you an example, both of those currently fall under the chairman's office. And with the daily activities that I don't, nobody could keep up with the animal control officer until the explosion came when people didn't get serviced or something happened. So this takes it, puts it under that part of it, under the sheriff's office, where people call the sheriff's office. We got a dispatcher putting the calls out. We got a log. We'll have it being recorded, and we got a, it will be a deputy that comes out with a camera. So we got, we got that well, more controlled, and then I'll have a manager at the, if we approve this, a manager at the shelter that will have help. And now we can get back in the community, do better job of adopting, having more dog programs, just spaying neuters, and do more of what we should be doing at the shelter rather than right now, they're having to go out and do the both jobs. So those two ladies that work up there have done a human's job, let me tell you.
Chairman, on that same topic, there's been some changes in the laws that make this advantageous as well. This morning at eight o'clock, I was downstairs on an Emily's Law case where an individual had been confined for the last ninety days involving an animal attack, and it is, it is very good to have ACO certified personnel that are able to do those reports and provide that information to court system because we do have life and liberty at stake on those things. So I fully support that, and I'm happy to work with the commission to get this accomplished.
And this gives this enforcement officer will have the authority to issue citations.
Citations, even make arrests if need be.
We envision this to be more of a, adding investigative role to this position. It's for Emily Law, animals at large type, you know, that's one of our most calls we get to respond to is animals at large.
And you look at the possibility of fatalities, if there are livestock in the road and different things like that. There's been a lot of people hurt running into a cow in the middle of the night or whatever else.
It has. We hope this reduces our calls to our patrol units also, because this individual, this unit, or this division will be responsible for answering those calls during hours.
Any questions?
We get a lot of them.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Discuss revenue commissioner salary request. Commissioner Johnson, you wanna come up and?
This is, this is, oh, my legislative asked for a resolution.
So this is the combination of a meeting with the local legislative delegation. As you all are aware, the salaries of the elected officials are set by local act. And anytime they are adjusted, other than in the course of a cost of living adjustment that is applied countywide, they require a bill to be introduced and passed by the legislature. And as is their custom, they like to hear from the Marshall County Commission when they are doing those things. And so I've drafted the resolution that is in front of me. It's a very simple resolution that just requires a number to be filled in the blank there to ultimately pass to be sent to the Marshall County Legislative Delegation for their consideration for the upcoming session. And I don't, I don't, y'all have all done research on the amounts and different things there. So you'll see that in the findings that I proposed, I went ahead and made a statement that it does appear that the elected officials are all undercompensated, and so I've applied it to all elected officials. But then this, this resolution homes in on support of the local act as it stands to the relevant commission.
Any comments or statements? All right, we'll move on. Revenue commission, discuss approval of payment request to Jackson Cell Interiors for five hundred sixty-two dollars and fifty cents. This is, this is, this is simple, needs approval, just why the date failed, what happened. Put us into this year, so we just need to approve it. There's nothing, it's all legitimate, just has to be approved. Next item, discuss approval of insurance addendum for four-ten Marlin Road, Albertville, and you want to roll twenty-two into that. Discuss approval of subordinate...
Subordination, a torment and a stopple agreement.
There you go. Agreement with Dendi's Investment Group LLC, Marshall County Commission, First Southern Banks. You want to do both of those, Clint?
Yes, sir. So first, I want to chastise my profession for using words like a torment. It sounds, it sounds so awful. An atorment agreement is basically just a transfer. It is consenting to a transfer. So this commission is well aware that we have entered into a lease agreement with the option to purchase the building up at four-ten Marlin Road. And under that agreement, the landlord is Dendi Investment Group LLC, and Dendi Investment Group is obligated to do the build out. And so this agreement allows Mr. Dendi to secure the funds from First State Bank to do that build out. And this atorment agreement is a consent of the Marshall County Commission for a transfer of the lease agreement as it exists to First State Bank in the event of a foreclosure. So it wouldn't be a foreclosure in the traditional sense. The bank does have a security interest in the building, which the county does not yet own, but does have rights to under a lease agreement. but does have rights to under a lease agreement. And, uh, thank you. And the lease agreement or the at tournament agreement that has been, this was prepared by First State Bank. It was prepared, it's a form and I have modified the form. Would you pass that down to the chair? And you'll see where I've added the insurance language on, um, I think it's paragraph four. I'm sorry, paragraph six. So I've made those changes and read the insurance agreement that we were doing was, uh, at the request of the county's insurance carrier. So since the county will not yet own the building, the insured interest would be within the investment. So this would add Marshall County as the additional insurer on that existing policy. I put it in paragraph six because paragraph six states that First State Bank would also be listed as a mortgaging on that insurance clause. So paragraph six takes care of the, uh, insurance, um, the insurance abendum that's covered in paragraph, or the, uh, item number twenty-one. And then the only other change that I made to this is that the standard subordination agreement allows the bank in the event of the, uh, foreclosure of this property to, uh, terminate the lease. I struck the, the termination language and what it would do is basically make the bank become the, uh, landlord in the event of a foreclosure. So the county would just make the payments that we're obligated to make. Instead of it going to Dendi Investment in the event of a foreclosure, it would go directly to the bank. So the county's protected, the bank is protected, Mr. Dendi is able to get money, but he needs to do that. And the insurance is all covered in one fell swoop.
And when Dendi pays off this loan.
The mortgage is released and then the at tournament agreement just becomes meaningless because the mortgage. So what this does in, in the chain of title, you've got the deed into Dendi Investment Group LLC. And then the next document that is recorded is the lease agreement with the county. And then there would be another document in the chain of title, that's the mortgage. This effectively allows that mortgage to chop the lease so that if the mortgage has to be foreclosed, they're going to acquire Dendi Investment Group's LLC's interest. And they would become the landlord in our lease agreement. We would continue to make payments to them as, as provided in the lease agreement. And then once the mortgage is satisfied, that document just comes out of the chain of title and we're back ripening the, the Dendi investment deed in the chain of title.
A stopple means the same thing as a tournament?
No, a stopple just means that you can't, uh, you, you cannot go back on this. So once this is, once this is the agreement, nobody can change the agreement. We're stopped. That is another legal issue that you're prevented from changing this agreement. It, it becomes the agreement, this becomes part of the lease agreement, it's incorporated by agreement.
And I would assume this has still got to be presented to the bank and they still got to agree with what?
Yes, sir, but I, uh, I, as you can see, the changes are minimal and, and it does not in any way affect the bank. The bank still gets paid in full and this is, I, I think this falls into the category of much ado about nothing because this is a very, very low risk loan because we have the lease agreement that obligates the county to pay the payment to Dendi. So we know that the payment is going to be there each month because we're the one making it. We're not trusting anybody, you know, we, we either pay it directly to the bank or we pay it to Dendi. So the mortgages, this is, this is not going to come fast because you don't get many sure things, but this is a pretty sure thing.
And this sets it up so the payment actually goes to the bank?
Well, no, this, the payment still goes to Mr. Dendi as long as he's not in default on the, on the mortgage. He, the only way that, that, that the bank would get the payment is if the bank notified us that that mortgage had been foreclosed. Everything else remains the same. This is just, uh, in the event some, the wheels come off.
Any other questions or statements? All right, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
All right, on the twenty-three, engineering, discuss the combination of various lots of the reserves in Lake Gunnersville in phase two and three located in District Two. Did you want to say something? Do you mind coming up to the mic and just tell us your name and, uh, where you live?
Sharon Triolo, I'm one of the homeowners at the reserve at Lake Gunnersville. We met with a few of you last month. We had found out at the last minute that there were six or seven people who owned property at the reserve that had petitioned the commission to merge some of their contiguous lots. And they had not advised the HOA community who were doing that. So you agreed to table it until another meeting so we could have an HOA meeting. We had that meeting and at that meeting, Mr. Upton and John McCoy, who are two of those petitioners, confirmed that the full intent was that if you agreed to merge these lots, they intend to go to the HOA and reduce the number of lots from one thirteen to ninety-nine, which means that all the other homeowners have to pick up the cost of those HOA fees. The homeowners gave Mr. Upton and them, they, we had two lawyers that were there and they gave them some legal rulings that they, they, the laws of Alabama, they thought prevented this. And we asked him to get a legal ruling before he proceeded with this. To our knowledge, he's not, he's not presenting anything else to the HOA. My concern too is that by doing this, sets precedence. And if all the other commissioners in the state of Alabama did this, I think it would cause quite a bit of upheaval with HOAs in the community. So we, and I think I got something, I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know. But it says that you have the authority to merge these things, these lots, if it falls within your authority and you find that it's placing. But it says that no action of the county can alter or negate any restrictive covenant. So I mean, it's our contention then that the, our plat that we had that showed there was a hundred thirteen lots, we think it should be a hundred fifteen. But by him doing this and by them confirming that they intend to reduce the number of lots, they have, their plan is to destroy the integrity of the existing community. And so we request again that it be tabled or not approved.
So she, what she read was exactly right. You have the, the choice to allow the merger of these lots or to disallow them, these lots. And whatever you do does not affect the restrictive covenants at all. If I, and it's, you know, you, you can take both sides of any argument. I would think that whatever happens here does not change what the allocations are among the homeowners association. So if I was over the homeowners association, I would say, I don't care what the Marshall County Commission says. You've got three lots, you owe three assessments. And I, if, you know, if I were a gambling man, I would say that in a, in a courtroom setting, if you have a new lot forty, forty-one A, my guess would be that the court would have, would uphold the three assessments for lot forty-one A, which was former, because again, we have chain of title issues. You have whoever bought that lot, that property before it was subdivided, they bought it in one big mass. Then they went through the procedure and got those, uh, those, that property broken down into the smaller pot, uh, spots with the roads and all that other stuff. That was approved and then the restrictive covenants were reported, so those became in, in effect. What you're doing is not going back in time, it's just a new document in the chain of title and everything that is above that in the chain of title is still there. So the restrictive covenants and how they took title was three lots. So I, I would, I would think that they have a very strong argument, but that's not for us to decide and we don't have a dog in that hunt. I, there's, there's no reason, legal reason why you can't approve the mergers and there's no reason why you have to. But as to the integrity of the homeowners association, I'm of the opinion that what you do here today doesn't affect that one iota.
Part of the problem we have is that two of the people that made this petition to you are board members of the HOA and they're financially benefiting from this at the, you know, negative impact to the rest of them. And to us, that's a gross conflict interest that shouldn't.
I'm assuming that two members does not, a majority may come on the board. So y'all could swatch that vote pretty, pretty handily if I can. How many board members do you have? So three to two always wins, uh, but that's, that's group politics and it doesn't have anything to do with.
So if they approve this, I mean, there's nothing they can say. They can come back to the HOA and say that they want to reduce the number of lots, then I guess we'd have to take them to court or something.
No, they, no, you would, you would say, no, you still owe the three, the three. And if they don't pay it, then you have to do the assessment process. But y'all, y'all control whether they pay one assessment or three assessments. And I'm just reading the tea leaves here, but I'm guessing that it would be a three to two vote to say that they still owe the three. And then y'all duke it out. But leave us out of it.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So we shouldn't take any action over?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's free for y'all to take up. And, and what y'all do here today is not going to tie the hands of the HOA. It's not going to in any way limit what, I mean, the, the HOA is still very much in control of whatever the reg, the restrictions say. You're not modifying those things.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sure. This, this is a public hearing, so sure can.
Oh, state your name and where you live, please.
Right, I got a little, I wrote it up just so I'd have my points. Uh, my name is Chris McDavid, I live at lot fifty-seven. I've lived there for about three years. Um, I'm a twenty-seven year veteran and a colonel in the Army Reserve. I came here to address the unacceptable ways and means that our HOA president has gone about this. But I wish to address the effects of that too. Before our last HOA board meeting a couple of weeks ago, none of us heard the intent of the consolidation, uh, of certain property owners. There's like six or seven property owners that want to do this. This was done in a way that, because they believe they found a loophole, which you, you got the, uh, sorry. Sorry, the county attorney, uh, addressed. There's a loophole. You guys don't care what the HOA does and the HOA has to follow by what you said, right? So there's a.
I disagree with that. I don't think the HOA is that.
Okay. You're, you're saying you agree or disagree? Okay. Well, he addressed our HOA and he basically said that he would be able to consolidate his votes down to, or it would be that he would consolidate his votes, but he would consolidate his property to one assessment. That's, that was what the gist was during that meeting.
That would be his request of the HOA, but the HOA is not bound to accept.
HOA is, the HOA board is very much kind of in his camp, unfortunately. But the rest of us lot owners that are single lot owners are not many of us. So, uh, many of us believe that the owners are using select language of our governing documents, but not the whole. It's like taking a piece out of the Bible and saying that this is what it is without taking the whole. The effects by allowing these select owners to consolidate the lots, it'll place a financial burden, which is what Sharon said, on the rest of us. Is it a big deal? You know, two hundred fifty dollars more a year? No, but I don't live in a socialist country, I don't think. So that's, that's my, I'm a little bit passionate about this, so, uh, apologize. So finally, just let me ask, uh, totally a little bit off topic, but to invest in a county inspector for new construction. I'm in a lawsuit, that's something that's way overdue.
So does the one have something to do with the other? The lawsuit and the county inspector, that's a, that's an aside and has nothing to do with this? I didn't under, I just didn't understand, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Another question, is there a representative of the organization or people who wants to make this combination?
We, we've already heard from them, I think, haven't we?
Yes, sir.
So, explain where we're at, Mike.
We've already been presented the information for the combination of.
Yeah, and we continued it one time or put it aside one time before. Explain where we're at, Mike, and what, where we're at with the statue that governs us.
Two meetings ago, uh, which the surveyor sent us this information probably three months ago when we started evaluating and Crystal done an evaluation with covenants, deeds, anything that she could find that would reveal anything that says that you can or you can't combine lots at the reserve. It doesn't say if you combine lots that the fees go up on the existing people. I mean, that's something we just, we don't evaluate. We don't have that information if we did. Most of the time when people won't combine lots, it's because sometimes a house is on a lot line. Sometimes they just want a bigger lot because they got kids and grandkids that want to play. Uh, but those don't fall in the decision as well. We just presented the information and we have to evaluate everything. We found one that was brought to our attention behind Chick-fil-A. And there was something in the covenants that said that. Restriction on the deed. Okay, so a lot of things are evaluated before this information's presented to the commission. Last meeting, uh, we were approached, uh, Tuesday or Monday before and, and listening to some folks, one of the ladies got a cert, certified letter, had some questions. So we asked the commission to table that so we can evaluate that information. But the information we evaluated did not reflect that, uh, it couldn't be presented to the, to the commission for consideration. That doesn't play a factor in the role of decision.
Well, Mike, I, I don't think we answered Larry's question. His question was, is anybody from the HOA that wants this, have they spoken? And the answer to that is no. He is not.
Not in public, no.
Not, not in public, he has not come before and, and talked. None of the, none of the people that want this have, have been here to talk. That's, that is a true statement.
I think he was at the last meeting.
He didn't speak.
But we don't have a requirement that somebody that petitions the, the commission to do something has to speak in support of it. I understand the question, but we are imposing a standard that we have not here before imposed if that is in fact what, what it's designed to do.
How about a consideration of the grand total of people wanting it versus the total of people that don't? That is usually.
When this came up years ago with one of the owners, one of the owners of the conference there, he wanted permission to be consolidated. And so, or say more of that time, we did a resolution to approve and do that to make it into a lot. He went to a lawyer, he said, and got a ruling at the time, but the lawyer told me that he could do a resolution maybe on a, you know, a short term, but in long run it required amendments to the covenants. And he's never come to us to do that in, in, in that part of the community, the HOA, but he wants.
But now, all we, we can't stop me as you graciously do.
Sorry.
Uh, but the only thing that we can address here is our subdivision regulations. Your HOA, we have nothing to do with.
That's just, that's just the law.
It has nothing to do, but we, we have nothing to do with your.
Right.
Nothing. Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
And, and there's plenty of things for y'all to fight over without regard to what we do. I mean, if, and, and you see this in older subdivisions a lot of the time, for whatever reason, back in the fifties, when people subdivided lots, they made the lot about twenty foot wide. And then you have all these ranch style houses that are built across four different, uh, subdivisions. when people subdivided lots, they made the lot about twenty foot wide, and then you have all these ranch style houses that are built across four different, uh, subdivision lots. And as a title attorney, you see, you know, all the time and coming out of the fifties and the sixties, for whatever reason, I don't know what they were designing houses for at that point in time, but it certainly wasn't a ranch style house. And, you know, the only thing that we're looking at is we granted the subdivision with however many lots it was at the outset. And now they are wanting to take one, or three lots in one instance, I saw one that has three and most of them just have two, and they want one tax assessment. And so we are approving, if they approve it, to roll two tax assessments into one assessment, and then the assessment would have, it'd have to be reassessed and all that other stuff. But what is already in place do, does not change. What are the HOA fees that, so I, is it two hundred and fifty dollars a lot? Eighteen hundred per, per year? And what are the, what are the expenses that y'all pay out of that? Well, I did some quick math, and a hundred and thirteen lots means that y'all bear point eight-eight percent of the expense per lot. Ninety-nine lots means that you bear one point zero one percent of the, and because I had no idea, I was just basing it on a hundred thousand dollars a year of community expenses, that would take it from eight hundred and eighty-four dollars and ninety-six cents with a hundred and thirteen lots spread out over a hundred and thirteen to one thousand ten dollars and ten cents with it spread out over ninety-nine lots. I did that for a luster of purposes because it doesn't make a hill of beans up here, but you've got. But I, I don't, I don't, uh, I do not agree that a consolidation here means that they are reducing from three HOA fees to one.
Now, this language in our documents that states that it's unfair for somebody to bear that burden, when he's using language in those documents whenever he has one lot considered by you.
Well, I, uh, noted that you mentioned that you're not socialist and neither am I. And one thing I love about this country is we have the right to contract with each other. And when you bought a lot out there, you bought a lot based on that restrictive covenant, and that was somebody else threw that up, not us. And I also like the ability to petition the government to do things with your own property, and whatever your contracts are, we don't get involved in enforcing them or fighting about it.
Paying eighteen hundred a lot right now? What's the eighteen hundred dollars for?
Have you been up there?
Long time.
It's an amazing place, and it looks like an expensive place to live.
Well, I, I think the important issue for us, we don't wanna set a precedent outside of what the statute gives us to do. We have a statute that describes what we're supposed to do without taking any considerations, and I, I feel for you, but however, that's not in our bill whack.
And, and, and there's, there's plenty of opportunities on the second floor for them to force the, this, the information out of the, I, I mean, there, there, y'all got, the, the second floor is wide open to you. The second floor is where the courtrooms are, uh, circuit courts specifically. Yeah, but that's how we enforce contractual rights in the United States, we, we sue each other. God bless America.
But I think in your HOA that I read, even though you're combining these, when it comes to your HOA, if you're by, combining three lots, you're still going into one, you're still gonna have three votes, right?
Uh, yes. It, 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 as, as the lots go, so go the votes.
Yes, yes.
So if they're paying three lot assessments, they get three votes. If they got one lot assessment, they've got one vote.
But, but they're gonna combine those lots into one.
No, they're combining two and, so it, it, it's going from a hun, a hundred and thirteen down to ninety-nine. But, so if, if one person owns two lots, they have two votes.
Yes.
It's either gonna be two assessments and two votes, or one assessment and one vote. You can't have your cake and eat it too.
I, I understand that, but if, if, I think, Michael, when he does, I, I know you've been having your head down, you don't make eye contact, but you did. But I think when he does, when he does this, he's gonna put them three lots into one parcel.
Well, no, you guys are gonna put those three lots into one parcel, but that does not a change what they got going. Well. If you can, if you can get two lawyers in one room, you could probably get six different opinions out of those two lawyers.
All right.
And that's, that's also the reason we have judges, but I, I disagree that that would automatically change anything that goes on with the, a, a HOA. And I'm not available for retaining, retain whichever one of y'all like, what I said or dislike, and I'm not available to enter the parade.
All right, anything further? Other subject?
I did wanna thank surveyor that presented this information, is here Brandon Allen, who's next up, surveyor south of A-Rab. So he does an amazing job, which he's like, I guess, the commission, he's caught in the middle. But he is a gentleman that presents valuable information to the engineering department, whether it's a major plant, minor plant, combination of lots, uh, he does an amazing job.
And he answers his phone.
And he answers his phone.
Sometime.
You get back with us. Thank you for being.
What's that now?
The thirty A was ninety-two A?
Yeah, we, we, we caught that, it's, it's, it's corrected.
Okay, anything further? On this subject, we'll move on. Discuss approval and setting a speed limit on Preston Island Circle located in District Two.
We were asked to look at a speed limit, uh, on Preston Island Circle. Kevin Stubblefield, Assistant County Engineer, evaluated that for us. Fifteen to nineteen foot wide roadway, it's located in a residential area, several horizontal and vertical curves. For some reason, we had an existing speed limit sign already up there at twenty-five miles an hour, so after his evaluation, he didn't feel a need to change that. So we just need the approval of the commission, uh, so that we can update one side and leave the other one up.
That it? Discuss approval of Twin Creek Villa located in District Four.
Okay, in District Four, uh, Twin Creek Villas, we were asked to evaluate, we worked closely with the city of Albertville, as well as, uh, Marshall DeCav, uh, there was a right of way that went through there, utility easement, uh, and we worked with them uh, for, uh, the Twin Creek Villas developer. Uh, they have three, I believe, already there, and they're adding four more, it is a private road that will stay private, so not be maintained by the county. The, uh, developer is, uh, Mr. Lopez, and of course, the owner is his wife, Ms. Lopez. So they meet the requirements for, uh, this to be approved.
Discuss approval of snow removal agreement for two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six between the Alabama Department of Transportation and Marshall County.
Mr. sent out the hourly rates, uh, that we had last year from ALDOT. Uh, last year's removal rates were a hundred and eighty-seven dollars per hour for motor grader, eighty-five dollars an hour for a pilot vehicle, and a hundred and sixty dollars per hour for rubber tire loaders. Uh, I guess we're asking, do we wanna keep those same hourly rates, or is this something that commission feels we need to increase?
How much, what, for road grader?
Hundred and eighty-seven dollars per hour. And this for state grounds?
Well, I, I, I bought some new cars for my road graders five years ago for thirty-three hundred dollars. I ordered a new set the other day for seventy-five hundred dollars, same tire.
So you wanna increase that number? If we're, if we're doing snow removal?
Sure.
Okay.
Even our blades.
What number did you, is the commission wish to make that one eighty-seven for the motor grader?
Two hundred and two? Two hundred?
Okay. What about the pilot car vehicle, leave it at eighty-five?
Go to a hundred.
Go to a hundred on the pilot vehicle? And the rubber tire loaders?
Do with that same wheel.
Leave it at a hundred and sixty? Grader's probably one of your.
Grader, you ain't gonna get a rubber tow, you gonna, you gonna crash a rubber wheel loader in the ditch when you get it out of the snow.
But this gives a way for the ALDOT to reimburse us if for some reason we're doing some snow clearing, ice clearing, whatever clear we're doing for ALDOT, to have this agreement placed and they can reimburse us, reimburse us.
I don't think we've done any in the past five.
We have not.
We have not.
It's been a while, but it's good to have this in place in case we do. So we'll get Crystal to correct those and, uh, get those done. What did we say was a rubber tire loader?
Leave it same.
It was a hundred and sixty dollars per hour. No reason to increase, by my understanding.
All right, anything else on that? Discuss approval of payment to Alabama Department of Transportation for special work authorization, one thousand two hundred ninety-four dollars seventy-nine cents from countywide funds.
We have SWA account with ALDOT, and they like for us to keep a minimum of two thousand dollars in that account. We are at twelve, one thousand two hundred ninety-four dollars and seventy-nine cents. Uh, we charge, uh, diaries, uh, field books. So, when we get cylinders broke, we, then they charge that to this account, when we pick up cylinder molds to make the cylinders, they charge this account. Snooper, underwater inspection, so there's a number of things that we, uh, charge to this account. So, it's important for us to have this so that when we do need special assistance from ALDOT, this is what it's charged.
All right, anything else on that? All right, guys, let's, uh, come back in about two minutes after by the clock on the wall for our regular meeting.
Mr. Schumate.
Yes.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Sims.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Approve the resolution for the Revenue Commissioner's salary request. Do I have someone that will give us a number?
That's what I did. I'm gonna give you a number and y'all argue with it, whatever. We got five, five counties here. I took out the lowest, which is Marshall County, and I took out the highest, which is Jackson. And the average of the remaining three is $106,000.
106, correct?
106, 781.
All right, do I have anyone just?
I, I'm just gonna go out there and say that I don't think we should do a raise, and it's nothing against Michael Johnson. I just, every elected official in Marshall County is underpaid. Our employees are underpaid, and I just don't see that we should give one person a raise, considering all that. So, that's my opinion, and Michael knows how I am. But, we got three other votes here, so y'all can go whichever way of the...
All right, I need, I need a motion on Rick's recommendation.
You have a motion, need a second. Rick's, Rick made the motion, I need a second. Was it 106, 781?
106, 781. If you take the high and the low out, and they divide the, by three, by the other, the other half, other ones, it's 106, 781.
All right, once again, I need a second.
What's the, what's the salary now?
Eighty.
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five, 104.
Second. All right, just move in a second. Commissioner Schumate.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Sims.
No.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
And that's nothing, nothing against you.
All right, Revenue Commissioner approve payment request to Jackson Shell Interiors, $562.50.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve, approve payment request to Jackson Shell Interiors in the amount of $562.50. Okay.
Get your bread.
I guess I gotta stick my neck out since it's in my district. Uh, I want to approve the combination of various lots in the reserve at Lake Gunnersville in, in phases two and three located in District Two.
Need a second. Second. Commissioner Schumate.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Sims.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
And I think the statute that we have to govern under is pretty plain about.
I, I do too, but like I said there, they've got a long road ahead.
They do. Approve setting a speed limit of 25 miles per hour on Preston Island Circle, located in District Two.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve setting a speed limit of 25 miles an hour on Preston Island Circle, located in District Two.
Second.
Commissioner Schumate.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Sims.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Approve Twin Creek Villa, located in District Four.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the Twin Creek Villa, located in District Four.
Second.
Commissioner Schumate.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Sims.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Approve the snow removal agreement for 2025 through 2026 between the Alabama Department of Transportation and Marshall Kent.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve the snow removal agreement, 25-26, between the Alabama Department of Transportation and Marshall County Commission.
Second.
Commissioner Schumate.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Sims.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Approve payment to Alabama Department of Transportation for special work authorizations, $1,294.79 countywide funds.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve payment to Alabama Department of Transportation, special work authorization, in the amount of $1,294.76 countywide.
Second.
Commissioner Schumate.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Sims.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Approve the sale, trade, or scrap of fixed assets, you wanna read that?
Oh, let's see here, we got, make a motion to, I just make a motion to approve the list as presented. Got some printers and laptops from BMA and Reappraisal, then you got three vehicles from Reappraisal, GMC terrains, 2011 and two 2013s.
All commissioners have a copy of this?
Yes.
Yes.
Do I get a second?
Second.
Commissioner Schumate.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Sims.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
We have anyone else with anything to say?
I got a question, Smite. We still on track for round march for the roundabout?
Yes.
To go out to bid?
Yes.
Anything else?
We might need to seek some other funds from highway group. When that time comes, I'll let you know. The 60% of the plans are done. All right, so, once it gets ready, we, uh, Crystal got the letter sent to Aldott so that we can continue that pass, 'cause after two years, we have to...
Did they approve the, continue the grant?
I'll check, I'll check on it. Not to my knowledge, that isn't the date. I asked, was there an issue? Tim Westover with Good Will Mills K1 GMC, and he said, he's done a number of those, never been there yet. As long as you've got progress showing that the 60% or greater to be going to bid by March of 2026, that's the target.
Did I hear you say he might have to go out? Y'all might have to go out for more money?
Yeah, I think it could exceed, 'cause it's been two years, so it may take a little more than two million to build a, and, and... That's based on roundabout that's been built across the state. Uh, it's getting a little more expensive each day. So, there's a possibility the two million might not fill the roundabout.
Every time we wait a year or something, it always goes up, no matter what we do. All right, if nothing else, I need a motion to adjourn.
Snow removal.
Second.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank y'all.
Changes.
Have a good holiday.
It never goes down.